Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular open meeting for the West Bridgewater School Committee. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence. The listing of matters on the agenda are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair which may be discussed at this meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. This meeting is being videotaped for cable. I'd like to first welcome our student rep, Bella Antoninelli. Thank you. And may I have a motion to approve the minutes from the October 19th meeting?
Moved second.
Moved second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, great. Thank you. So this is probably the best part of the school committee meetings, which is the recognitions. I'm not sure if this is on, if you can hear me? Alright, alright. Mr. Bodwell, could you please come up to the podium? No, switch places.
Alright, excellent. You know, we're very proud. Every year we get the MCAS results, and to see the scores, we do so well traditionally as a district. Our 10th grade always does an amazing job, but to score perfectly is quite an accomplishment. So we certainly want to recognize those students who had perfect scores on the Grade 10 MCAS test. So the first is in math, Caleb Bellamy. Also in math, Colleen Daly. And our third perfect score math, Liam Norton. In English Language Arts, a perfect score goes to Lauren Carey. Must be studying. And in the grade nine Biology, Margaret Allen. Alright, the next set of awards are the John and Abigail Adams Scholarship recipients. To receive this scholarship, you have to score at least one advanced and then proficient on the Grade 10 tests. We had 34 students score the top 25 percent of their class, and this allows free tuition to any Massachusetts State College or University, which after four years could equal close to about $10,000. And we also say it's just a real recognition of the pride and hard work that they put in. So if they're going out of state, or they go into a private school, it's still a tremendous honor for them to get this scholarship and to be recognized. We also, we recognize our seniors in front of our sophomores and hope to inspire them. So we announce it, we have all sophomore class and the senior class, so they're recognized in front of a lot of students, and it's great to recognize them here as well. So the award winners are Sidney Brooks, Allison Weinman, Emily Yeo. Once again, congratulations to all of our students, and congratulations to our parents
So in order to allow everyone to go home and have dinner, we'll take a brief recess. Thank you for coming.
Hey. You're on the floor here.
Seriously successful place.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, you guys were right about the chairs. Jim, you were right about the chairs.
What?
Not to pull anymore out here because they were all leaving.
Um.
Alright. She texted me at least five or six times.
I love you.
We're dealing with this together, you know. I know, I know.
What is it, what is she drinking?
Uh, 6:12. She texted me, so. Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Okay. Let's resume the school committee meeting. The next section will be under Personnel, under Retirements. Dr. Oakley?
Yeah, we have two retirements that are happening during the 15-16 school year, so I wanted to announce that our Guidance Secretary, Jan Wells, had put her retirement in last year for the end of February, February 29th. She'll be leaving us. She has been a long time Secretary for the Middle Senior High School. She was many years in the main office as the Principal's Secretary, and then upon the retirement of Mary Lou Boyd, she went over to be Guidance Secretary. And she's done an unbelievable job in Guidance. There's so many things that have deadlines and have to be done, and they have such times of the year, especially, for example, what she just went through right now with all the kids applying to colleges and all that, especially the early admins and stuff, that it gets really hectic. And then she's a big piece of the scholarship, which gets really busy around the springtime. So there's a lot that goes into it. There's, she has to do everything from making sure that the kids get their college applications in on time, to monitoring all the testing results, and look at a teacher, making sure they get their teacher recommendations. She works with kids that apply to Boys and Girls State, she works with kids that apply to the PCC program, you know, making sure they get all their materials and stuff. So she's done a great job for us, and she'll be missed as of February. So we'll be opening up that position after the 1st of the year, and we'll be advertising for a new Guidance Secretary for that. Second, we have Sharon Fala, and hers will be effective March 30th. Sharon's been the Library Media Specialist for many years. I think she probably started back around 90, in 1994-ish, around there, and came to West Bridgewater from a previous position as a Library Media Specialist. She helped take our library that she came into that had no digital technology and digitized the card catalog and all those types of things, and bring a lot more media into the Library Media area. And helped, did a lot of work packing up and making the move over to this new building. So we will be going out in the spring, actually, for our new Library Media Specialist to start in September.
Great. Thank you very much. And now, under Presentations, we have the Coordinated Program Review vine, Dr. Hanscom.
Okay, I was so busy doing attendance that I forgot I actually had to talk tonight. And I don't even know if I got everybody, I'm not gonna lie. I did my best. There were a lot of people. So last year, we completed our Coordinated Program Review, which is where the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education Program Quality Assurance Department comes out and takes a look at our practices in the areas of Special Education, Civil Rights, and English Language Education. So two years ago, we did a self-study, which I, you know, thought was gonna kill me, to be honest with you. It's so much work. And then they look at your self-study and they decide what they're gonna look at when they come out on site, which they did last year. They came out on site in May, the first week of May last year. Two different evaluators came out and met with teachers, related service providers, instructional assistants, parents, administrators, and I think that's it. They came and looked at the buildings, they looked at all the spaces. They gave us a lot of passes on what they saw at the Middle Senior High School, because they knew we were going to be here, which is great, but they looked at all the instructional spaces, they looked through those lenses, through the lenses of Special Education, Civil Rights, and English Language, and Education for English Language Learners. They reviewed, oh, how many files? Forty files, Special Education files, for compliance, and double-checked that review when they came on site. So it was extensive. The staff worked really, really hard to kind of put all of what we do together in a way that would make it easy for them to review. So they came out, and then they sent us our findings in, the end of August, I think, was when we received our report. And I'm really excited to say we did it, we did really well. They were very, very happy with what they saw. So in Special Education, there were 39 criteria that they looked at, and we were, there were findings on three of those, which I'll go over tonight. In Civil Rights, there were 27 criteria, and there were two findings in that area. One of the findings in Civil Rights was a duplicate of Special Education, it's the same problem. And then in English Language Education, for which I can take absolutely no credit, because that's really Dr. Oakley and Mrs. Quealy, who are in charge of that, we had 100% compliance. And I sort of didn't even want to tell you that, because I don't think we're gonna be able to fit her head in this room. But no, that's fantastic. We have, they changed all of the requirements for ELE very, very recently, and we're one of the first districts that they reviewed with the new regs, and no one is having luck with the review. People are now asking, like stalking me on email, to get our, what we did on, to the Google Drive, so they can see it, because people, we are doing it right in West Bridgewater for English Language Education. So, okay, Dr. Oakley, give yourself a pat on the back. But Mrs. Amy Quealy, our ESL teacher, really deserves a ton of credit. She worked very, very hard to put that together. So I'm not gonna review anything with ELE tonight, because there's no findings. For Special Education, the three findings, the first one was on Transition Services for students 14 and older. The second one was on our CPAC, which is our Special Education Parent Advisory Council, and I'm gonna speak more about that in a minute. And then the third one was on Facilities. Where the Special Education classrooms were located at the Howard School was not okay with them. I'll talk about each of those in a second. For Civil Rights, the one finding was accessibility of the stage at Roseell McDonald School. And the second one was that special ed space at Howard again. So they put it in two places. So in order to address these issues, I had to write a corrective action plan, which was due within 20 days of receiving the report. So I'm just gonna tell you what we're doing to fix all the problems. Most of them we fixed, actually. So in terms of Transition Services, they told me that I needed the vision statements on IEPs for students 14 and older to begin with the student's name. It, ours began with "the team" in visions, and they said that wasn't okay for students 14 and older. I fought and said, "I think that's silly," but I lost. So as a result, we've gone through training with all of the Middle Senior High School staff, anyone working with students 14 and older, and have reviewed how to engage the student's vision in their vision statement on their IEP. So that training has been done, and then we reconvene the teams of the students whose file, whose records they looked at, and we revise those IEPs to meet that criteria. So that's been completed. For the second special ed finding, which was the Special Education Parent Advisory Council, I had been trying to have a special ed parent advisory council since I got here, and I ran the meeting every year, once a year, like I have to, and I went over the regs, and the same two people would come every year, and one of them's right there, she's so nice. And they only came because they felt sorry for me, and they didn't want me to be sitting in the room by myself. But as a result of this finding, I kinda went on a really, like, huge push to families to see if I could get folks to come. And we had our first CPAC meeting this year, and five people came. And I'm gonna talk about that in a minute. But it's exciting. I think we have some really good ideas, and I think we're actually gonna make some nice gains towards supporting families of children with disabilities. So that piece is finished. And then the facilities, we made a switch this summer. The man from DES, he came out this fall to work on this with me, and went over, we walked over to Howard, I showed it to him, we're good, it's done. So that's fine. So that's Special Education. For Civil Rights, the Roseell McDonald Stage is not accessible, there's no ramp. And so I asked them, I was like, "Well, what happened six years ago and 12 years ago when you came out?" Because there wasn't a ramp then either. And they said, "Well, we weren't those people." So it's like, okay. So thank, Mr. Holden has been working with Mrs. Smith, Sarah Smith, on working on a solution to that problem. And they're in the process of, I think, getting a lift for the Roseell McDonald Stage, which will be in that side room where the copier is right now. That's the plan right now?
That's the correct.
Yeah. So that's exciting, because we really should have been accessible. And I wasn't, when I was saying that to them, I wasn't saying that we shouldn't be accessible, it was more like, "This isn't news." So that will be in place in the next few weeks. They're gonna hopefully have that work done.
I, I don't know what the turnaround time is on ordering one, so I wouldn't obligate to a few weeks.
Okay, well-
It may not happen for, till after the new year, but I'm not positive of that.
So-
But it's going to happen.
Yeah, and I can show them the purchase order at least, because by December I have to do a progress report to the state.
I believe that's already been done.
Good, that's great.
The ordering aspect of it.
Okay, super. And that was the easiest. We looked at ramps, and that was just not a good option for a variety of reasons, but this lift seems to be working. And then the second one was that special ed space at Howard, which again was addressed, so that's all set. So all in all, I submitted the corrective action plan, it was accepted. I have to do a progress report by December 18th, which at that point, everything will have been fixed. And then in March, I have to submit a second progress report where I do an internal review of records to make sure we're still on compliance. And then we close the books on this Coordinated Program Review, and they come in six years, or five years now. So all in all, the district has made vast improvements over the past six years from the last time, and a lot of people have worked very, very hard to make that the case. We're doing a really excellent job of being in compliance with all the numerous and exhausting regulations around Special Education and Civil Rights and English Language Education. So I have to just give a lot of credit to the Special Education staff, all of the teachers, all of the therapists, all of the instructional assistants, the administrators who are incredibly supportive, because I'm not the most popular person in the world sometimes when it comes to compliance, and people generally still smile when they see me, and I'm grateful to that, so.
And I need to say that, sitting at roundtable meetings with other superintendents and assistant superintendents that SPED Direct is, on the whole, actually, in the whole state level, the things that we got, that we needed improvement, that we had findings for, that, it's a very, very, very small number. And most schools have many, many more findings than we had, so. And if you notice, I mean, our find, it was like building physical space type things, it's not really, they weren't really programmatic things. And I think that's, you know, kudos to Dr. Hanscom and the Special Education Department and the administrators, because at least programmatically, we're doing what we're supposed to for kids. The other things are, like, they see it one time, they might not see it another time. So doing very, very well here, and many, much fewer findings than most districts, so.
And I should add too, the entire report is available on our website, it is posted up there, and if anyone watching is interested, I could also email you a PDF of the report. You would just email me at hanscom@wbridgewater.com, so you can read it in its entirety as well. Any questions?
No. That was very thorough. Thank you very, very much.
That means long, I'm sorry.
No, no, it means thorough.
Okay.
Now I believe you're presenting another update?
Yes. So part of the corrective action for the Coordinated Program Review was to establish CPAC, a Special Education Parent Advisory Council, which I sort of argued that I had tried, and it didn't work, and I couldn't drag people out of their house to come to meetings, but that didn't fly, they didn't really care. So at our meeting in October, we had five people attend, which was wonderful. And at that meeting, we established bylaws and voted on them. We established a chairperson and a secretary, so we have parents running this group now. And we set up the dates for the rest of the year. I am meeting with the chairperson, Dr. Winchell, and the secretary, Mrs. Ronstrom, in a few weeks to plan the rest of the evenings that we're going to have. But we've established, it's exciting, we've established an email address for the CPAC, which is wbcpac@wbridgewater.com. We've put together, or we're putting together a Google folder of resources for families that families will be able to access, and any family, not just families with kids who receive IEP services, but on disability-related areas. And the last thing is, we are going to send a letter that goes with every new IEP home to families, talking about the CPAC, giving them all the information about other families that they can connect with, because I can say from very personal experience, when you have a child with disabilities, it can be a really isolating experience. You feel, you know you're not the only one, but you feel like you are sometimes. And to be able to talk to other families who are either going through it, or have gone through it, or have tips or advice, or can just understand when you're like, "I can't even move one more day," it's, there's nothing more helpful to families than that. And I think in West Bridgewater, we are very lucky that it's a close-knit community, and that's probably happening in an informal way, but for those families that aren't as connected, we're hoping this letter will give them the, it'll be from Dr. Winchell, the chairperson of CPAC, will say, "Hey, welcome, here we are, we are here for you, whatever you need," kind of a thing. So I think, I'm excited, I think we're gonna actually, I won't be alone, I don't think, next year when I hold that first meeting, so. So that's pretty much it. There may be other times I come back to you to represent input to this, from the CPAC to the school committee, because that's also the function of the CPAC, is to give input to the district on matters pertaining to areas of Special Education. So that's pretty much it.
That's fantastic.
Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the time.
Superintendent's update. Dr. Oakley?
Thank you. Just wanna do a few updates, and Middle Senior High School building update that we do every time. They're still working on the punch list. I think, we told you before, I don't even know how many thousand punch list items there were at the beginning of the punch list, but they're plugging away at them, mostly after school hours, and they come in on Saturdays, and they've been doing a lot of things. Probably the biggest thing that was done this past week was they finished the pavement of the entry driveway. So that makes a huge difference, because we were getting a little nervous that the asphalt plants were gonna close, and then we wouldn't have had that finished. They have to also come back and finish the sidewalk with the asphalt, so that's a, that's a big one. And slowly, we're just plugging away at all the different things, but what I wanted to show you was, got a video, I had put it up on our Facebook page, but I don't know if everyone saw it. It was kind of an interesting video that Flansburgh put together, and we noticed when we went to the MAS, MASC conference, that their booth was showing our videos, so I thought I'd show you guys. So it's, it's good advertisement, obviously, for them. So I'll show you the video that we did. Good afternoon to everyone. Welcome to the new West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School.
It's a true partnership. It's a partnership with the state, with the town, with the taxpayers. This facility is truly amazing, just truly amazing.
And slowly, we're just plugging away at all the different things. But what I wanted to show you was, got a video, I had put it up on our Facebook page, but I don't know if everyone saw it. It was kind of an interesting video that Flansburg put together. And we noticed when we went to the MAS, MASC conference, that their booth was showing our videos, so I thought I'd show you guys. So it's, it's good advertisement, obviously, for them. So I'll show you the video that we did. Good afternoon to everyone, welcome to the new West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School.
It's a true partnership, it's a partnership with the state, with the town, with the taxpayers. This facility is truly amazing, just truly amazing.
It's a community facility, aligning with our small-town ideals and our desire to bring people together.
And I look around and I see the students that this is for, I see the dedication of teachers and all of the staff. They deserve a building to teach children 21st century education, so that they can compete in the global economy.
Providing opportunity for kids to have access to the skills and the equipment that they will need to get the kind of jobs that we see growing here in Massachusetts. And when we are able to provide this in collaboration with communities, we know that we are creating a future for these children.
The mission of the Mass School Building Authority is to partner with Massachusetts communities to promote the design and construction of educationally appropriate, flexible, sustainable, and cost-effective public school facilities. And this project certainly meets that ideal.
That was impressive.
You did a good job.
I love that.
So, I thought that was, Flansburg put that together, but just the way that they shot it, makes the building look so cool.
Cause it is so cool.
And it's nice, I know like the architect, Kent Kovacs, who was a principal architect that we all know from the building committee, they, you know, do all the plans and then they turn it over to an onsite architect and the general contractor, and they build it. And they don't get to, a lot of times, see as much of their finished work. And he came here for a meeting and to take video, and it was right during break time. And he's like, this is what we pitched it, there's kids over there, there's kids doing, like, that was what we wanted the space to be. And then there were kids, a little bit later on, their Chromebooks out at the cyber cafe doing some work, and then he's like, this is exactly what we pitched it. And he doesn't get to always see, but it's kinda cool that he, you know, planned the whole thing and it was exactly what he wanted, so. So I thought that was, they did a nice job with that video. And, my next thing is, another video. The Southeast Collaborative Regional Organization is made up of 88 school districts and nine collaboratives. And we formed this organization so that we could share resources and help with smaller schools, so that we could keep our own autonomy, but share resources such as professional development and other types of services. And we've been building up different things over the years. One of the things that we started a year ago is a virtual learning academy. And it's completely on the ground floor right now, we're just trying to get it up and running. But the, the reason we, we decided to try to start this is that virtual learning is the future, it's not going away, and we know that. And right now, you go out to for-profit companies and you can buy individual virtual online courses for kids to take. But our goal, and Mr. Bob will have it as in his like five-year goal, is before kids graduate, within the next five years, we would like all kids to take at least one virtual course. Well, it's really not cost-effective for us with the private companies. So, on the South Shore, we thought, wouldn't it be great if we could, with the 88 districts, get teachers trained that are licensed in Massachusetts, that know the Massachusetts frameworks, and that we would have local control with, and it would be local, so that kids wouldn't have different time zones and stuff like that while they're emailing them, and start our own virtual learning academy. And you have to start somewhere. But if we got enough courses and enough of the, enough schools involved, we can bring that price point down, so then we could afford everybody before they graduate to take a virtual course. The other thing we liked about making it local, as opposed to something that's the whole country, because some courses may fare better if they are a hybrid. And so they might need some face-to-face. So they'll have a virtual course, but I was just talking to the director of facilities at Stonehill College, and he said, I'd love to be involved in that. And maybe two of the Saturday, two, two days per semester, or three Saturdays per semester, the kids from that class come and meet at Stonehill. So, that it would be a hybrid model, which would be similar to college, and then they get, they're on a college campus doing this. So with local control, we can kind of build it into that. So we're on the very first level, we have about 20 courses that we've trained teachers to be online course developers in, on the South Shore. Three of them are from West Bridgewater. And we have about 40 students that are trying some of the courses right now. We're trying, we wanna run a second cohort of teachers to be trained, starting, I think it's November 30th. I know West Bridgewater will have two that are interested, and we wanna get another 20. If we do this every year, eventually we'll have a lot of courses and we can grow it into a lot of different things. But right now, they're semester courses, there's a couple year-long courses. And we're looking at it from credit recovery, to taking something because you have a scheduling conflict, to my school doesn't offer that, to AP courses that have more rigor, and we just don't have an AP teacher in that course, or something like that. So there's a lot of potential. And we're hanging on by a thread, because when you, you know when you do a startup, you have to put a lot of money in and you don't get a lot of return right away, but we're really, right now, we're trying to get it out so we can get more people to take it. So we've been on the cutting edge of this. And about a month ago, or a little over a month ago, I went to one of our subcommittee meetings, and they said, we need to do a better job advertising it. How do we get peo-, kids to tell people that this is good, it works, it's local, how would you sell it? We need an infomercial. And I don't know what happened, maybe I left the room to go to the bathroom or something, but when I came back, I got voted in to, can you put a commercial ticket?
Never leave the room.
I said, okay, well, I'll go and talk to Mr. Cray and see what he can do with some of his TV kids. And he has some interns, and some TV2 kids. So basically, brought the kids down and said, some of you are already taking this online virtual course, some of you taken, so you know what it's about, but we need to sell this, we need to get the information out there, so that the other, I need something to send out to the other 88 districts and to show this. I showed it last week, we did a workshop last Friday at the MAS, MASC, and we showed the video to about 30 people that, that came to the conference, and we've been putting it out there. So, what's nice about this is, our kids did it, and I didn't tell them what to do. They know what it's about, they did it all themselves. So not only is it to really sell this virtual learning academy, what I think, the reason I wanna show you more is, this is a perfect example of authentic assessment, authentic work that these kids did. And they came up with the way they were gonna do it, and the questions, all of themselves. And I think they did a really good job. So I thought I'd show you what our TV kids can do. And you gotta also remember that, they only had about three weeks to do it. And anyone that knows anything about putting movies together is, that's not a lot of time to edit, cause you have to go out and shoot, and then you have to edit. Matter of fact, one of the kids, I walked in to the TV room, and he was editing, and he's like, I'm editing it, and he's like, but there's not enough hours in the day and my classes are getting in the way with this. But they did a great job, even though it was crunch time and I, when I asked them to do it. So I wanna show you what they put together, which I think is kinda cool.
For virtual high school, I'm taking the criminology course.
I am currently taking video game design.
For virtual high school, I'm taking criminology.
I'm taking criminology.
For virtual high school, I'm taking the criminology course.
Uh, yeah, I definitely like it a lot better than normal class, it's a lot more independent.
I love it so far. It allows me to take a class that I can't take inside of school, and it allows me to learn multiple different types of code. And my teacher who's doing the class, she's been very great at teaching us different things about video games.
I like them, they seem to be working out pretty good.
My online course, I really enjoy this year, it's something that's new, and I think it's gonna be a good one for the school.
I think this program is user-friendly, it's really easy to know what's supposed to be going on.
I certainly think this program is a lot more user-friendly. Moodle, the program that's used in the website, every year they're updating it, and it allows students to be able to take weeks' worth of work and be able to do it in their own time.
Pretty user-friendly, we, we were trained in it, so that certainly helped a lot. We were trained in the Moodle program, and it's a platform I've used before. So, once you get the hang of it, yeah, it's pretty, pretty familiar and pretty easy to navigate.
From the teacher's point of view, once you get used to it and you've learned your way around, it's very user-friendly.
It is actually really easy to contact my teacher, all I have to do is email her.
Yeah, it's pretty easy, I just shoot her an email, she hears the response pretty quick.
It's actually quite easy to contact the students in my class, because there's a built-in email program right in the class, and it will email the students automatically, so it makes it really easy.
I think the courses are certainly challenging, it makes me think a lot. And for computer classes I've taken in school, I haven't had to work as hard on them, but it's work that I can manage, and it teaches me to be more independent on the course.
The courses are somewhat challenging, but not like challenging enough where I'm like struggling with the work. I think they're like medium.
If you don't read the topics before you answer the questions, it can be challenging, but if you do your work, it should be fine.
In the class I'm taking criminology, I don't think, it sounds like a college course pretty much, and you wouldn't be able to take that in high school.
I certainly think that it does off, offer me other courses that I can't take in school, especially since West Bridgewater is such a small town. We don't have as many teachers and/or as many classes that we can have online, so I'm allowed to take the video game course that are not offered here.
Definitely. I know that our school doesn't offer criminology, so the fact that I get to take it online is just even better.
Absolutely. It gives, you know, by allowing them to take these online courses, replicates what they will see in the real world. Whether the real world is college right away, or any type of online learning, the experience they get taking these classes will be beneficial for them in the future.
Definitely, because last year, with the other program, I had a teacher in Texas, and so there was a whole problem with time differences, and so by having a teacher that's closer, it makes it so much easier.
I certainly think it would be a bit easier, mainly because we're not in the same area. We talk about the same things in the course, and we're in the same time zone as well. So, even with my experience this year with the new program, she's been able to teach or ask any questions or answer anything with a great response.
Last year, we used Engenuity, and it was kind of a difficult program, so this year, I do like the program that we're using, because it's much simpler and easier.
I didn't particularly use the CPAC course last year, but this year, I think it's a lot better, mainly because it allows more personalization for New England students, and it also allows us to be more local with our teachers.
I think they would, cause it offers like new like courses you can take and new classes that aren't offered in the school system.
I certainly think the students have benefited from the program, it allows them to be more independent, and allows students to, like, go find and go into college, to be able to work on their own, on certain course.
This program is definitely gonna benefit all of the students.
I feel that this program has a lot of great benefits for our school. Number one, it allows our students to take courses that they otherwise would not be able to take here at West Bridgewater Middle Senior High School. Courses that will expand their learning, and also give them great experiences outside of our traditional classroom.
I think it's a great opportunity for students to be able to take courses that are not necessarily offered at their school. There are a lot of great courses for students to access, such as sign language and different gaming, gaming classes. And it also offers the flexibility for students to be able to access those courses at, at different times throughout the day that work for their schedule.
Online learning program is great, because it gives us more local control over the courses that we're taking. It's, it's beneficial, because it really teaches the students, the students' time management skills, independent learning skills, and self-motivation. So I think all those things together make them better overall learners in the classroom. Absolutely. We're at the ground floor now, we know it's just gonna get better. We have 40 students already signed up, three staff members who are enjoying the program, really expands the learning of both our kids and of our faculty.
That was awesome. What a great job.
Yeah, and I think the best thing was, they did it all themselves. You know, they came up with the questions, and grabbed Mark as an actor, and, you know, came up with the questions, and it wasn't scripted, they just answered it the way they felt, which is kind of, kind of cool, so. So that is going out to 88 school districts in Massachusetts, as part of an email to get people involved in the program. And usually, when people, we ask people to do things at school, they wanna hear from kids. So, they do. Kudos to the TV kids.
Definitely.
All right, last part of the update is, we had, as you know, an elementary math night last week, and about, close to 100 people, grades K through 6, for parents that showed up, we ended up having it here, cause we knew that if we got a lot of people, it would be hard to do breakout sessions in the elementary school. So we used the middle, senior high school, and started with an open session and gave an overview of the new program that we have for the math program, and the philosophy behind it, that it's not about rote and just teaching the skills of mathematics, but it's really bigger than that, and it's about teaching problem-solving through mathematics. And then we broke the parents up into grade-level clusters, and they went with their teachers, and actually talked about a typical lesson, and also the parent, what really parents wanted was the resources, the digital resources. And so now, parents can get into a parent envisioned webpage that the district put together. So it's a West Bridgewater envisioned webpage. And parents can go to the link, to get the link on our own webpage, the district webpage, or each individual school webpage. And then they would click into that, and it will give the information on passwords and how to get in. But instead of going into the student's account and trying to go through work, you know, different links and games and all that stuff, we really wanted to make it just parent-specific, to make it as easy for parents as possible. We really had two goals about the evening. One was, so that people understood why we went to envision math, and why we believe that it's the best, best way to teach math that we found out there, and it aligns with our philosophy and the state frameworks the best. And the second thing was, let's give parents homework help, because as I said when we had the meeting, is that eight-letter word, homework, gives parents as much angst as the four-letter word, snow, gives me. So, we needed to give them support and, and help them. And some of you were there, and I thought we had a great turnout, the teachers did great, parents had great questions, and they were very attentive and involved. And I have, up to this point, gotten much feedback. I've, I had three parents grab me this morning, when they were dropping their kindergarten kids off, and they have some older kids also, and said that math night was great, we got so much out of it, and we definitely got the two things out, cause I've had people say, I get now. Like, it was frustrating, because I didn't understand why you were teaching it this way, but I get it now. And those resources are great, because now I can click- And those resources are great because now I can click in and watch the video, the little two-minute video that my kids saw in class, can watch it. So I understand how to do it. But also I can have my child watch it again and they say, "Oh yeah, that's how we can do this." So I think it really put a lot of parents at ease and is going to help with the implementation of the program. So I don't know if, I know some of you were there and if you have any comments about it or if you've had a chance or talked to other parents about it.
I, um, I, one of my comments is, I guess, I just was so impressed by the fact that we were so well represented by the teachers. You know, that was a night that these teachers took out of their personal, you know, their lives. One of the teachers actually even brought his child in as support.
Because he had to babysit.
Right, right. So, um, and I just thought that that, um, that meant a lot to the parents, that they sent the message that they're in this together and that they had to help us. So I was, I was grateful for that.
Yeah. It was great. So I think it went well. I'm sure we'll get other positive things. As people were leaving, we were giving them handouts and they, as we said as a group, they came and looked, they didn't look like they really wanted to be here or that happy when they got here. Yeah, but everyone left happy. So that's a win-win. It was good. So I think it really, will really start to take off now, the program.
I agree.
And one more thing, just connected to math. Tomorrow is the vote by the Massachusetts Board of Education on the future of testing in Massachusetts. And by all accounts, I know that the commissioner's going to propose an MCAS 2.0, which will be part MCAS and part PARC and put together somehow that way. We don't really have details on that, but I think that's the direction that the board will probably go. But at least we'll finally, after, gosh, two years of waiting and wondering, have a decision of the direction of testing in Massachusetts after tomorrow. So we'll keep you up to date on that.
Great.
Now we have business.
And under business, we have Mr. Bodwell and Mrs. Diamond. I believe the middle, senior high school chorus is going to visit the Hart Chorus Festival at the Hart School and the University of Hartford, Connecticut. Excellent. Mr. LaMarian, thank you. And Mrs. Diamond.
So I want to say thank you to Mrs. Diamond first because I'm completing one of my goals for my practicum as I speak here today. So, um, yeah. So I had to show up in my mail. I left it on Mrs. Diamond's desk. It's strictly for the chorus. But honestly, we're doing this as a group effort in the music department. Whatever we do, we do together. So we're always together and we always talk about what we're doing. This is an excellent opportunity for our choral students and we beat me in both the middle school and the high school because they're in one chorus together this year. And we've done festivals in the past. We've gone to Six Flags, Music in the Parks, stuff like that. But this would be a new experience, going to the Hart, um, the Hart School, which is a prestigious music, uh, music school within the University of Hartford. And it will take place on Monday, March 14th, 2016. Uh, the cost will be $150 for the whole chorus, taking out music funds, the student account, music funds. We've been raising money.
Yes, we've been trying.
For weeks. We've been doing very, very well. Student participation has been probably the highest I've seen it since I've been working here on, um, doing things. Had a lot growing. And in our effort to try to continue growing numbers in the performing ensembles, I think this would be a very good opportunity to take the current chorus members there, to not only give them the opportunity, but to show that we want to give more performance opportunities all around to all our students to get even more people involved in the music department. So we're just kindly asking you that you approve this for us so that we can take them there and give them more performance opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Will the transportation costs also be covered by the music department?
Yes, we're raising the money to take care of the bus. And we are hopeful that they will go with a bagged lunch on the bus. And then we are going to ask our music boosters association if they would take care of a supper for them on the way home.
Oh, nice. Sounds like fun.
All right. Could I have a motion? If there are no further questions.
I'll make a motion to approve the field trip that's presented.
Moved.
Second.
Moved to second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Congratulations.
Have a good time.
Yeah. And under the second aspect of business is the MESS and MASC Conference. And that will be myself and Mrs. Hume. Originally, I was to be the delegate for the vote and Donna graciously had stepped in as the alternate. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. And Donna, I would like to give a little presentation on the resolutions.
Sure. There were seven in total. The first one was regarding high school starting times. Uh, it called for a commission to study the appropriate starting times for students in middle and high school. And that one was approved. Resolution two was regarding poverty in children. It called for support in legislation to eradicate poverty among Massachusetts children and advocate for social and economic justice for students and their families. That one also was approved. Resolution three was regarding tying test scores to chapter 70 funding. It called that the MASC support legislation to ensure that individual student MCAS and/or PARC assessment data in a given academic year is ascribed to the school and the district that claims the chapter 70 funding based on that student's October 1st enrollment. That also was approved. With regard to that one, one school district proposed an amendment to this resolution at the time of the meeting to do away with all the standardized testing in Massachusetts. But after much discussion, that amendment was ruled not germane to the original resolution. So it was removed. But then someone also proposed to just do an informal poll at that time to see who in the room was in favor of doing away with high-stakes assessment testing. And the result was 66 in favor and 42 against. Resolution four was support for an equitable and sustainable placement program for students covered under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Education Assistant Act. That also was approved. It called that the MASC file for and support legislation that will design, implement, and fund a program that will provide a more sustainable and equitable placement program for the state's homeless students. Resolution five was a tax reform ballot question. It called that the MASC explore ways to promote social and economic equity through a ballot initiative whose purpose may include a state constitutional amendment, tax reform, protection of the state's neediest residents of all ages, and seeks additional revenue only from the tax reform affecting the state's wealthiest residents. That resolution did fail. Did not pass. And the sixth was membership of a school committee member on the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education. It was proposed that the MASC submit to the general court proposed legislation that MGL Chapter 15, Section 1E, be revised to include, as one of the nine members of the BESC, a representative from a school committee from a list of three nominees provided by the MASC. And the last one was relative to the teaching strategies, gold assessments for kindergarten students. It proposed that the MASC urge the Department of Early Education and Care and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education to end the mandate that districts implement TS Gold or any other externally-developed kindergarten assessment. And that was carried as well.
Excellent. Any questions? Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you. Any questions? That was great. Thank you very much. Thank you again for sticking in as the alternate. I appreciate it. And now we are approval of policies. Policy number 6200, which is the restraint policy. That was mine with Dr. Hanscom. And what I would like to say, I guess, I have two comments. The first is that I was very impressed with not only, um, I think the focus that, that I know the state has to give it under the regs and so forth, but also, Dr. Hanscom, your input when we sat down and we went through the policy. So you educated me on this as well. And I think that the title of it is more than just the physical restraint. It's, the full title is Physical Restraint and Behavior Support Policy. So I think that's just as important, the behavior support aspect of it that you educated me on. So I thank you for that. The changes are in red. I believe, actually, they were done, um, they were originally in red and then when we had gone through it, I think we had printed it out as a final. We just added some subsections to it. And again, this is really just a mirror of the state mandated policy language and from the lawyers as well. Yeah, the regulations are changing as of January 1st, 2016, physical restraint. So this is actually a really new document. Like we took what we needed from the level and it's really rewritten almost completely to align with the regulations. And yes, the attorney very much did it. Yeah, yes, they did. We always do. So I'd like to have a motion in support of the physical restraint and behavior support policy as presented.
Moved. Second.
Moved, second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And again, thank you, Dr. Hanscom, for your time on that. Uh, policy 6300. Oh, it's mine again. Student safety. Actually, that's myself and Mrs. Smith. And that actually goes hand in hand with the Safe Schools Crisis Management Protocol. Mrs. Smith and I are on the Subcommittee of the Safe Schools with Mr. Bodwell. Because we were having some technical difficulties, Mrs. Smith and myself, we haven't been able to review suggested changes and amendments by Mr. Bodwell. So we just wanted to table these two policies and give it one more month just to make sure that we have everyone's suggestions and the correct language. If that's all right? Thank you. Policy 8303, student discipline. Mr. Holden.
Uh, the policy, um, student discipline. With exception to one section that refers to the state under CMA rules, everything was online. And then when I did go online with the state, I found that everything is exactly, with the exception of maybe a couple of words here and there, to our identical policy. So as far as I'm concerned, I would like for it to move forward as it stands.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
Moved.
Moved.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Holden.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time. And now assignment of policies. There's only one assignment. It's policy 3500, which is the harassment policy. Any takers? I'll be happy to take that. Oh, great. Awesome. Help educate me more. Excellent. I'll take that policy, myself and Dr. Hanscom. And under...
Does that include harassment of the superintendent?
Yes. Absolutely. Wait till you see all those reds.
I put, I put that in if I will.
And now under the public forum. Members of the audience wishing to address the committee may do so at this time. Audience members are reminded that personnel issues or issues that would violate student confidentiality cannot be addressed during this public forum. And there, who would you want to address? On the calendar section, under other. November 20th is a half-day of school for grades pre-K through grade eight only. November 23rd to the 25th is the half-day of schools for all schools. November 26th through the 27th is the Thanksgiving break. There will be no school. December 12th is the Santa's Breakfast from 9:00 to 11:00 a.m. at the Rose L. McDonald School. Uh, the, under the middle, senior high school. November 19th, the Leo's Club Induction, which is 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the auditorium.
That was rescheduled.
That's been postponed. Postponed. Do we have a new date yet?
Not yet.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. So we'll take that out. So November 20th, we have middle school parent-teacher conferences from 12:00 to 2:00. November 23rd and 24th, we have parent-teacher conferences from 6:00 to 9:00. On December 2nd, we have the National Junior Honor Society Induction from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And on December 3rd, we have the Cross Country Banquet from 5:30 to 8:30 in the auditorium and then the cafeteria. And December 11th, we have the drama performance of The Black Box at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. With the Howard School. Molly, would you mind?
Sure. On November 17th, the school council meeting at 2:45 p.m. in the conference room. On November 18th, the PTO-sponsored Native American Perspectives for Grade 5. On November 20th, parent conferences from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. On November 23rd, parent conferences from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On November 24th, parent conferences 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. December 1st, the Pride Assembly at 1:45 p.m. in the gym. December 2nd, the PTO-sponsored animal adaptations for grade 5. And December 9th, Howard School Winter Concert at 6:00 p.m. in the middle, senior high school auditorium.
Thank you.
Rose L. McDonald School. On November 20th, parent-teacher conferences from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. November 23rd and 24th, parent-teacher conferences from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. December 11th, PTO-sponsored Elf Shop, 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. December 12th, PTO-sponsored Elf Shop from 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. At the Spring Street School. November 19th, school council meeting at 2:45. November 20th, parent-teacher conferences. Kindergarten is 12:30 to 3:00 p.m.